Okay, a very good evening to all the fellow Toastmasters. Welcome to the 108 Sutra Utama Toastmasters Club Regular Meeting with an inspiring theme of seeds of success. Think about the seeds we plant in our life. Each time we step up to speak, support a fellow member or N G H in a new learning opportunity, we are sowing seeds that will eventually blossom into success. The growth may not be instantaneous. After all, it takes some time for a seed to sprout. But with patience and persistence, we can cultivate a garden rich with achievements. My name is Wasagi and I am the Sergeant at Arms for this meeting. Before we kick start the meeting, let me walk you through with some general reminders. The Zoom Master, can you please share the slide? Firstly, please put your phone on silent mode. Mute your microphone when not speaking. Turn on your video and finally, please be seated in a good posture and enjoy the video. Now, I would like to invite the Honorable President of Sutra Utama Toastmasters Club, Ms. Claire Tan for our opening address. Ms. Claire Tan, you can begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Wasu Wasagi. Thank you so much. Okay, so good evening fellow Toastmasters and today we don't have any guests. So good evening fellow Toastmasters. Welcome to our 108 Regular Meeting of Sutra Utama Toastmasters Clubs. Have you ever thought about what it takes to achieve your dreams? I believe each of us have a unique versions of success. A dream that we hold close to our hearts. And today, our team is Seeds of Success. Whether you already achieved your dreams or still working it towards or you're still unsure what is your dreams. But there is one thing that you have definitely, you can accomplish this year's. You guess what is it? Anyone can guess? You can tap in the chat box and let me see. So let me, right? So I can reveal the secrets. That is your Toastmaster journey. So the first steps to success is planting a seed. These seeds represent our dreams, goal and aspirations. For many of us joining Toastmasters for this first step, it's all started with a visions. If you're number one, you can type one, okay? If you're that become a better toast, become a better communicator, you can type one. Or you want to be a confident leader, you can type two. Or effective speaker, you can type three. So let me know who you want to be. Wow, oh, one, 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 two, two, three, one, two, three, alright. So everyone has your goal, right? Very good. Let me see, someone? Okay, think about what you truly want to achieve through Toastmaster and plant the seed firmly in your mind. So once the seed is planted, it needs to nurturing, correct? So this is where hard words, dedications and perseverance come into play. Our goals need continuous efforts and commitments. In Toastmaster, we nurture our seed by attending meeting, everybody. Participating in roles, I believe everyone is participating in role under my V P E calling every day. Okay, and delivering speeches. Each evaluations, each piece of the feedbacks and each moments of practice is feeding your Seed of Success. Let me share a little bit my story. There's a many Toastmasters have mentions to my fast pace. Become an area director in just a two years, a half, two and a half years. So but for me, I knew it very clearly what I want and what is my goal in Toastmasters. As I say, a seed need a goal. You plant an apple seed and you will get apple tree and you won't get watermelon, correct? And I always remind myself of end of my goal, D T M, Distinguished Toastmasters. So I hope that one day I can, people calling me Distinguished Toastmaster Claire Tan. So of course, there was obstacles always along the way. So what I do is I always stay focused and persistent and always remind myself, D T M is on the way. So growth takes time. A seed doesn't become a tree overnight, a room also. So it's require patient and persistent. There will be the time was processed seems slow and you might be feel like giving up. But remember, even when you can't see anything, but the growth is happening beneath the surface. So stay patient and stay persistent and trust the process. In Toastmaster, every speech you are given and every role you takes on and every meetings you attends is a step towards your growth. So finally, after all, the hard words and the patience comes to the harbor in one days. So without, in the conclusions, the Seed of Success are within each of us. It start with the visions, grow with the hard words and dedications and flourish with the patience and persistence. Through our journey in Toastmaster, we plant, nurture and harvest the seeds. So let's plant our seeds today and nurture them with care and watch as they grow into a success with ambitions. So without further ado, I would like to invite our Toastmaster of Evening today. He is a maintenance engineer. He also enjoy running, has his hobby and he also a musicians. In fact, he has a performance coming out in Patupahat in November. So everyone, if you want to see his perform, you can go to Patupahat to see now, uh, see soon. Maybe in one day you want to see him again, signature and you need to pay for him. So let's welcome and don't, and let's welcome and give a round of applause to our Toastmaster, Dior Chunyi. Over to you, Chunyi.
Thank you, our Club President. Here then for the introduction. Good evening, Club Presidents, the fellow Toastmasters and distinguished Toastmasters. Okay, so welcome to the Sutra Utama Toastmasters Club. My name is Chunyi, so I'm honoured to be your Toastmaster of the evening. So today, uh, the team is the Seeds of Success. Just like the seeds that host the potential of the game, the tree. Each of us carry with that within us the potential for the good success. The success goal is our golden goals. However, like the seeds, our potential need the right, the environment, nurturing and maybe the, um, the precise ways to let the, the seeds become the growth and be good. In our club, we country, but these seeds by the learning, practicing and supporting each other through the journey of self-improvement. So I will invite each of you to reflect on the seeds of the success. You have to blend in your life. Whether, whether it's a new skill, a project and a goal and how you time in the Toastmasters has helped the neutral those the seeds. Let's celebrate the growth and the progress we made together. So, uh, because today we don't have any the guests, so I will just, um, go through our Toastmaster of history. So I, I read, go to the, our role player, the introduction. So, um, I will be introduce some appointment, the holders tonight who were assist in the running of today's decision. First of all, we have our club members, the S A and the photographer, Toastmaster Wasu, who has assist in keep starting the tonight the program. She hold the record, the degrees in foreigners size and calorie, the working as the pharmacist, it go cameras and the broken. Her objective is to become the effective and confident communicator to enhance my, uh, his and her profession in direction and the professional to go. The next one is our, we have our I T man, Zoom Master. Diary, the dynamic leadership level four, Weijin. He work in the property, the management industry. Specifically, K Lee managing the resistance share the buildings. He hope to enjoy the everything life has to be offered. To keep the thread of the time, we have the Toastmaster, C N One. With thirty years of the real essence, the experience. She now lead seventeen agents as the Dire District, the Division Director. Specialising in corporate, resistance share, the renters, new developments and the industry, the properties. Whilst saying the commitment to continue the renting, to be the better sir, the client and her team. Next is our Akauta. Presentation Masterly Level Five, Yong Wee Lee. She is a happy members of our Sutra Utama Toastmasters Club. After joining the Toastmasters, her life changed from the being the introvert to the extrovert. And she now enjoy the speaking and sharing the, to monitor, eh, sorry, uh, to monitor the, to sharing the, our, the life, uh, for everyone. So the next one is to monitoring the impro, improper using the language. We have our Grammarian, Toastmaster Max. My hundred. Max is in the Autonet Automotive, the engineer by perfection. Joined the Toastmaster to overcome the fear of the public speaking. He was share with us the word of day and idiom of day. Over to you, Toastmaster Max.
Thank you Chunyi. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'll be your Grammarian for today. My role is to play, uh, to pay close attention to all speakers, monitor the accuracy of their language. I will take note of any improper language, including misuse words in complete sentences with mispronunciation, poor sentence structures and grammatical mistakes. I will also point out excellent use of words, phrases or sentences. And as Grammarian, it's also my duty to introduce the word of the day and the idiom of the day. So for today's meeting, the word of the day is harmonize. Meaning to make different things work well together or match them nicely. So a sentence example is the Toastmaster Club harmonized their efforts to force a successful speech contest. And this word can also be used for other subjects such as music, um, colours, ideas or rules or system. So for example, music in a band, the guitar and piano harmonized to create a beautiful song. Or colours, the blue curtain harmonized with the white walls, making the room look calm. Next is the idiom of, idiom of the day, which is find your words. Meaning to discover and express your thoughts and perspective. Example, through Toastmasters member learn to find their voice and communicate effectively. So as you deliver your speech, your back speech or table topics or evaluations today, I encourage you to find your voice and harmonize your words to create a more impactful and memorable experience. So let's try to use the word of the day and idiom of the day as much as possible. Over to you, Toastmaster of the Evening, Chunyi.
Yeah, thank you, our Grammarian. So last but not least, our experience, the General Ebrator. Innovative blending level three, Jacob Banner, will keep and eagle eyes, oversee the meetings and conduct the evaluation section. So now I will move on the one of the, um, the important sections in our Toastmaster meeting. To page the speech section. So our first speaker will be delivery, the level one, the project one. And valuation and the feedback. The first speech for the Presentation Masterly, the Pathway. The purpose of this, the project is for the members to present a speech on any topic. You serve, you see the feedback and apply the feedback to a second, the speech. The purpose of this speech is for the member to present us the speech and receive the feedback on the Ebrator. So the Ebrator for this project is Leadership Development Level Five, uh, Kier Tan. The time, the location for this speech is five to seven minute. May I invite the timer to demonstrate the timer sequence? Um, five minute, the green light will be displayed. Uh, maybe our timer can get, um, uh, reach the, you raise your hand. So, um, our speech, the speaker can get. You will know how to, how to react, your, rise, uh, rise your hand. Um, I think you need to change other one. Um, this one is, uh, the question. And, uh, ah, yeah, correct, really, yes. Okay, so the five minute, the green light will be displayed. The six minute, the yellow light will be displayed. The seven minute, the red screen will be displayed. The seven, seven minute fifty second, the bell screen will be displayed. Okay, thank you timer. So the speech title is Chau Ho Agony. The speaker is the patient, the translator and the language, the educator. The, the, delicate to language things. She is eager to explore the secret of being great list them in Malaysia. Please come me to welcome Toastmaster, Jack Green Chain. Chau Ho and Lonnie.
Agony.
Agony. Jack Green Chain, over to you.
Thank you, Chunyi. Uh, am I audible? And visible? Yes, good. Uh, I would like to share my, uh, slides first. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start now. Good evening, my fellow Toastmasters. Life is not always a bed of roses. Sometimes joy can easily turn into sadness. When I was five years old, I begged my father to send me to the kindergarten, which was attached to a primary school not far from my house. It was rare for a young kid like me at five years old to go into school to receive education in my generation. So when my father finally gave the green light, I was over the moon. But who knows, this assignment soon turned into a nightmare. The kindergarten was organized, was run by the government, but we still had to pay five ringgit. Don't you ever look down on this five ringgit? At the time, we could buy a big bowl of noodles for only twenty cents. Of course, I, I'm not going to say that my family is too poor to pay for it. My family actually could afford it because I could receive the five ringgit every month from my mom without fail. But I was not aware was that there was someone, an evil one lurking behind somewhere in the school. Was I very young and easy to pick on at the time? As far as I can remember, I was thinking monkey. Why? Because I was as thin as a rack. Probably you couldn't imagine how skinny I was at the time, it doesn't matter. The bully, should I call him a senior? Because he was studying at Standard One at the time, at the same school. Every day he would come to me, push me to the corner of the school and demand for the money. Give me the money or you'll die today. You idiot, where do you keep the money? I was terrified and didn't know what to do. Looking back, I was so silly. I should have told the, my parents or teachers about that. But for me, he was like a giant. Too powerful for me or even for my parents. So I kept it as a secret. All my joy of learning was replaced with daily fright. Every day, I could imagine, I could expect that he was waiting for me, which made me anxious and worried all day long. After one month, my mom gave me firing it for the school fee. She told me to keep it safely. So I, I hid the money in my pants suitcase, but it's no use. He came to me again and forced me to tell him the location. Of course, he took the money and I got a very good scolding from my mom. Luckily, after that, he disappeared. I didn't know why. Probably he also got a good scolding from his mom. Well, it happened a few decades ago. But the agony is clear in my mind still. Even after many years later, I saw him again. I saw the, the guy again at the shopping mall. I knew that he couldn't recognize me at all, but my heart still clanks. Why should I be afraid of him? He was just a very ordinary guy. He was even shorter than my brother. But I knew that the scar he left on me is permanent. A recent report revealed that the bullying cases in schools in Malaysia have reached a new height at five thousand cases last year compared with less than four thousand cases in two thousand twenty-two. It was an alarming rise of thirty percent. On twenty-fifth July this year, six former students of Uni, University Patahanah National Malaysia were sent to death for the murder, for the tragic murder of their fellow student to Fahan. This heartbreaking case tells us that our law does treat bullying as a very, very serious crime. But what has been done cannot be undone. Sending these penetrators of bullies to jail or death cannot change the fact that our victims have already lost their lives or are left with permanent mental and physical trauma. So deprivation is still the best medicine. All parties, including parents, teachers, school authorities who work together or harmonize their efforts to prevent or to stop the bullying right from the beginning. The victims must find their voices as well. Unfortunately, up to now, not much has been done to tackle this very serious problem in Malaysia. Thank you for your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster, the Jack Green Chain. The speech. So the children is actually is, uh, learning the faster and and love everything. But when they get the bullying, I think this one is also can extend a long time and to hear also. So our second speaker will be delivery is the level two, the project. Two introductions to Toastmaster mentoring for the delivery, leadership, leadership, the development, the pathway. The purpose of this project is for the member to carry the define now, the define how the Toastmasters ambitions, the mentoring. The purpose of this speech is for the member to share some aspect of, uh, previous, the experience as a project, prodigies. The Ebrator for this project is Toastmaster, Wong Ping How. The timer sequence is same with the first speech. So I will now demonstrate again. So the speech, the title is the different mentor met in my life. The speaker is working as the linguist. She is the patient about exploring the new things, the help and the well-being. Those the pursuit bringing him immense, immense the joy and fulfillment. Please help to welcome Leadership Development Level Two, Eric Ro, the different mentor met in my life. Eric Ro, The Different A Mentor Met In My Life. The Different A Mentor Met In My Life, Eric Ro, the say is yours.
Good evening, fellow Toastmaster and guests. Am I audible? Before I dive into my story, let's take a moment to understand the word mentor. The term comes from a Greek mythology. Mentor was the name of a character in the Odysseus, a trusted friend of the Odysseus, who was responsible for guiding and advising Odysseus' son, Telemachus. While his father was away, over time, the word mentor evolved into describing someone who provide guidance, wisdoms, and support to another person's in their learning journey. Mentorship, just like in the Asian stories, is about more than giving advice. It's about helping someone find their voice, discovering their strength, harmonizing their skills to achieve their goals. A mentor doesn't just point out the way. They walk alongside, helping you navigate the challenges and grow. What is mentorship today? It is a relationship where one person, the mentor, helps another person, the protege, harmonize their skills, knowledge, and experience to find success in their personal and professional life. It acts like a compass steering us towards our goals when we feel loss or uncertain. Mentorship helps us to find our voice, not by telling us what to say or do, but by guiding us to discover our unique strength and potential. When done right, mentoring can be one of the most transformative experiences in our life. To clarify, mentorship is not about providing all the answers or making decisions for the protege. A mentor isn't someone who controls the path or imposes their vision. Rather, they encourage their protege to explore their own path, providing support and feedback along the way. Mentorship is about harmonizing the protege's goals with practical guidance and helping them unlock their true potential. On the other hand, mentorship is not about creating dependencies. It's not one-sided relationship where the protege simply follow instructions. It's about empowerment, helping the protege build a confidence to make decisions independently and find their voices in whatever they are pursuing. Let me share a personal stories. A few years back. A few years ago, I stepped into a leadership role for the first time. Feeling both excited and overwhelmed, I had ideas, but I lacked clarity on how to execute them. That's when I met John, who became my mentor. John didn't just tell me what to do or how to handle situations. Instead, he asked me to thoughtful questions. He asked me thoughtful questions that make me reflect deeply on my own choices. He helped me harmonize my strengths and weaknesses and guided me towards understanding my own leadership style. John mentoring wasn't about giving me quick solutions. When I faced difficult decisions, he didn't hand me the answers. Instead, he encouraged me to find my own voice, to trust in my own judgment. It was frustrating at first because I was expecting direct guidance. But in time, I realized he was teaching me how to think critically and confidently. He was helping me becoming a leader, not just following instructions. Through this process, I learned resilience, problem-solving, and most importantly, self-trust. John mentorship had a lasting impact on me. Today, I approach challenges with confidence, knowing that I have the ability to make sound decisions because he taught me how to trust in myself. But what is the impact of a good mentorship? The true power of good mentorship, it harmonized the protege's strength and experience, encouraging them to grow beyond their comfort zone. It doesn't just give solutions. It provides the tools and the mindsets needed to overcome obstacles. Without John guidance, I might have felt overwhelmed and unsure of my own abilities. Instead, his mentorship helped me to find my voice and the confidence still guides me today. The impact of good mentorships is not templary, lasts for a lifetime. So what happened when mentorship goes wrong? I've seen instances where mentorship has gone wrong. Perhaps the mentor is overly controlled or they do not take time to understand the protege's goal. This kind of poor mentorship can lead to confusion, lack of confidence, and hell of frustrations. Without proper guidance, a protege might never find their voice. They might struggle to harmonize their goals with their actions and their progress stalls. In such cases, it's important to address the issue. If you find yourself in a situation with poor mentorship, have honest conversation with your mentor. Explain what's not working and what you need. Often, the mentor may not realize their approach isn't helpful or can be adjusted accordingly. How to fix a poor mentorship? If the mentorship relationship can't be fixed, don't be afraid to seek out a new mentor. Your growth and development are the priority. The goal is to find someone who can help you harmonize your potential with practical advice and guide you towards success in a supportive way. Now take a look at how Toastmaster envisioned mentoring. In Toastmaster, mentoring isn't just about teaching someone how to give a speech or complete a project. No, it's about helping members to find their voice, helping them harmonize their personal and professional goals with the skills they need to achieve them. Mentorship can make a lot of difference. In fact, it can make all the differences. It's not about giving directions. It's about harmonizing skills. So I ask you this, who has been your mentor and how has their guidance helped you out to find your voice? And if you haven't found a mentor yet, are you ready to seek out someone who can help you harmonize your journey towards success? Thank you, and back to you, Toastmaster of the evening.
Thank you, Eric, for the speech. So my mentor is the if, so he also learned and and to let me to learn a lot how to do the, for example, the poster or everything. So Eric also teach me a teach me everything and how to make some step-by-step how to do the the do the prototype, something the for my future hope. This one is for my future the the business. So uh the the our third speaker is will be deliberately her level five, the project prepared to the speech professional for the presentation mastery of the pathway. The purpose of this body is for the member to practice the developing and presenting a long speech. The evaluator for this speech is the Toastmaster, Himalani. The timer sequence for this speech is different with the first and the second the speak, the speech. So may I, um, so I may I invite the timer to demonstrate the timer sequence? So twenty minutes, the green light will be displayed. Twenty-one minute, the yellow and yellow screen will be displayed. Twenty-two minute, the green screen and the red screen will be displayed. Twenty-two minute, the fifty-second, the bell sign will be displayed. Okay, thank you, timer. So the speech, the title is Perspective. The speaker is the en- engineer who working close with the product, the designer, and he skip to sit better the presentation the skill. So please welcome the Presentation Mastery Level Four, Show Me Being with pers- perspective. Show Me Being and Perspective, Show Me Being, over to you.
Why is that? I would like to check. Everyone can see my screen?
Yes.
Yo, WhatsApp?
Ah, this is your WhatsApp.
What, my WhatsApp? Oh, okay. I shared the wrong thing.
We saw all your secrets already.
Let me share again. Oh, did I click? I, I think I still need to share this. So now my PowerPoint?
Yes. Um, yes.
Alright. Okay, let me. Evening, members of Toastmasters. Today, I'd like to share something about perspective. But before we go ahead with this perspective, let's have a movie time. It's my slide, okay. Do you like to watch movie? Uh, type one if yes. And type two is no. I see one. Yeah. Anybody? Yeah, I know see number two. I think everybody like to watch movie. Anybody know this movie, Sixth Sense? Somebody don't, you don't know that too? Bing Hao don't know. Khan also don't know. Wow, Khan is so young. Right? Okay, so this movie is something about perspective change. I like the movie in the sense that it's actually a thriller movie. It's considered a ghost story. I was very afraid when I watched this movie. Actually, for those who like ghost story, they think this one is just a beginner ghost story. I, I don't want to say much. Uh, for those who never watch, you go to watch. It's very nice. But it's something, it's a twist of the perspective. Is a child psychologist, which this Bruce Williams played a role. And he treat Charles, he's a mental disorder. And the the kids, they say they can see ghosts. He doesn't believe it. He say it's a mental disorder. But finally, the child, the this child, he twisted this Bruce release perspective. He make this psychologist aware that actually he already died. That's why this kid is talking to him. So you go to watch this movie is very nice. So this is, I've done my opening. So next, I want to go inside. What is perspective? Based on the Oxford language. Is the art, it has two definitions. One thing is a more physical things, like a, is a art of representing three-dimensional things by using two-dimensional languages. Example, the engineering drawing. In our earth, everything is three D. When we say about perspective is how you use length with height to describe a three D item. This is one definition of perspective, which we always see in the engineering drawing. Another one is a point of view. Another definition is a point of view. Point of view means your attitude towards something. Example, money. Some people see money is a wealth. Some people is a happiness. Some people is a dirty. Example, this is a perspective of doing things. So now, let me introduce you what are perspective? Can you guess? Just a rough guess. What do you think? How many perspectives are there? Perhaps I can discuss how many perspectives today. About guess? Anybody? Eleven. Wow, good. Many, yeah, too many. What else? Khan want to try? Three, yeah, good try. Why you want to discuss about perspective? Because it is how we perceive things. If we are aware, then we can be aware how we look at things. Okay, some eleven, some three, some seven. Let's go through it together. Now, the first thing, first one, we want to discuss is about one point perspective. It is something like the art of drawing. From one point, we um call it vanishing point. It's a direct eye level, just like this, this diagram, one point. Another one is two points. Can you see my slide? Okay, two-point perspective. This is like a two, two projecting point. So the middle become a horizontal line. And you, you can see the vertical line actually is still parallel, but there's two focus point. It looks like something like an emission impossible, something is projected in front of you. Another one, three D, three points per perspective. So can you still imagine if under three points, they looks quite vividly alive? Yeah, yeah, Bing Hao has something very good. Human are unique. We, we live in the three D dimension, but we can perceive fundamental reality. That's why we need to open our perspective. This is why today I want to make awareness how we think. And then perhaps we can have some thread through this blind spot because everybody have a blind spot. Okay, next, other than three points, possible four points? Possible. This is how the four-point perspective looks like. It's just like a, you look up from a high-rise building at the twenty, twenty, twentieth floor at the middle. Then you look at the higher building, look up and look down. You can see something like this. Although this diagram is a bit as a grid, but it's, it's something like this. If you can see it under four-point perspective. Just now somebody discussed seven. Okay, so let's explore. Is there more? Is there any more after four-point perspective? Be progress, my slide. Yes, fish eye. Anybody like the fish eye photography? This is something about five-point perspective, which is about one hundred and eighty degree. After we have the four points and then we have the fifth point. So it's something look like one, two, three is in the line and then four, five is at the north and at the south. So the photography will look like something like this. So this is already almost half of a sphere, one hundred eighty. If in everyday life, we can, we can think or observe an issue at one hundred eighty degree. So we already consider many points, many points of view. So we will come up some. So we will come up some decision, which is very, a lot of considerations. Another one, six point perspective. So this one is a bit a bit conceptual, which means what you see in front is a one hundred eighty. Another one hundred eighty is the one behind behind the scene. Then it met into a complete three hundred sixty view. So this is the perspective. So first you can follow up to here. Good. Yeah, a bit a bit head spinner because it's a different, different. It's not a straight line, it's a bit concave. Yeah, a bit. A big bang sound. Okay. When we discuss perspective initially, do you remember just now um the definition is saying about uh before we go to that? Okay, perspective is something like this. Everybody have a perspective towards. Uh things. It's just like a blind man and the elephant stories. Everybody see different things. There's nobody is true or nobody is wrong. Just everybody have a relative. Knowledge over a things. Then this collective knowledge will make a better description of the whole thing. Yeah, like Ben how say? If you look at the square, then you will say it is a square thing. If you look at the different perspective. If it is a block rectangle block, then you will say it is a rectangle. Yes, this is this is our life. So the lesson is, we need to respect everybody perspective. There's nobody is true, nobody is. Right, hundred percent, nobody is wrong, hundred percent. Okay, initially, there's one definition saying perspective is description of the dimensions. So now look at what is the dimensions means. Again, dimensions also have a lot of dimensions. Let's see what dimension means. So first definition is something to expand length breadth. Is is a length width and height. Another is a another explanation is a aspect or feature of a situation. Means uh what is what is the situation? Dimension also has a lots. Want to make a well guess, how many dimensions we have? Eleven, eleven dimensions, wow. Just now already headache on the perspective. Now we need to head it again on dimensions. Or B, yes, good guess. We have fourth dimension. Okay, let's proceed to explore how many dimension we have. Yeah, new physics, but we physics class, yeah, science from science perspective. Physics plus uh physo philosophy plus whatever you want to call it. Uh religions. Okay, let's go to the. Scientific explanation of zero dimension. Is something that you don't have a degree of freedom is something like just one point. Is a concept in physics, but it never assist. Another one is a one dimension and two dimension, three dimension, which we often hear. One dimension is a a line, you can go left or right. Two dimension is additional up down. Left, right, up, down, then we have a surface area. So this man, I name it that. So he this man can walk in between the surface area in a two D world. And the three D world is a. There there's a back in and out. So this man can walk inside and walk outside. So one, two, three D dimension is describing. Space. The space around us is a described the space. When we talk about four dimension, we talk about time. Sometimes we heard people say fourth dimension, right? So this one, this concept is described about time. So maybe five seconds ago. I still talk about three dim third dimension. Now, five second later, I talk about time. So this is a description of time. So similarly, this four dimension referring to the time actually is a one dimension for the time. The first dimension for the time, we just imaging uh past five second and the forward five second, something like this, one direction of the time. When we say. Five fifth dimension is a two dimension of a time. Up, down and left, right. Which means there's a probability. Let's say just now at the seven thirty, I didn't log in this meeting. Maybe I go to bath. So if just now I decided I go to bath, then not actually I already bathed. So this is the concept of this fifth dimension. There's a possibility if at that point, I can make a choice. Then probably become this result or that result. And the sixth dimension. Is the treaty of time. So this is the multiverse. Theory. The just now, somebody heard, uh somebody mentioned multiverse. So this, from the time perspective, this is the sixth dimension. So this four, five, six actually is describing time. So you can follow up to here. Very, very deep artist today. Right? So GPS. Anybody want to try GPS is what dimension? Three dimension or fourth dimension? Four dimension. Yeah, GPS actually can predict our arrival time. But it cannot, let's say I don't want, it cannot go back, it cannot go back. So it's still consider three dimension. Yeah, it strictly speaking is in a in a two D drawing, but actually it's a still two di- a three dimension world. It still cannot break through the four D means a backward. The time I want to undo, I I want to go backward, we still cannot. So we are still living in a three D world. Okay. Let's go to the seven dimension. I I hope everybody still can follow. One, two, three is about space, four, five, six is about time. So when we talk about seven D. Is is combined of the space and time. This is the multiverse. Just now, the sixth dimension already is one plate. One this uh square plate. So seven dimension is a, we have many, many possible six dimension. Then we may be travel from one to the another. Example, here is a universe where water is flammable in the green plate. We can travel to another one, universe where gravity repels instead of attracts. This is example, this is concept. And there's some more at D. Eight dimension. So eight dimension is the same is a two axis of a space and a time. It's uh it's just conceptual, we don't want to feel diet later on. And. Is anymore? Yes, there's some more ninety. Actually, we can, it's a three D of this multiverse. We can move from one multiverse to another multiverse. Interesting. And finally, after ninety, we have a ten D. Ten D is what many, many possibility. And is back to. Zero. Many, many possibility unimaginable is up of a human imagination. That's why we call it. Ninety. So still remember this movie? Now let's watch this movie. I need to change my screen. And one, two. Anybody not yet watch this movie? Okay. Yeah, this is, this is the story where our. Am I still sharing it? I think I click only. So the important thing is uh why I'm not sharing of all this is uh. I want to let everybody have a perspective. Actually, not everything we know is hundred percent right. Uh, because just like last time Newton, he challenged that actually our Earth is not flat. Because of human, we can think. And then we we dare to challenge what our understanding. Then we can solve our existing issues. Sometimes when we want to solve something. We need to think out of the box. So when we see from different perspective, we also is changing our solving problem skills. We see look from different angle, jump up, and then we can see differently. And with different dimensions. Is similarly, perhaps we ask different opinion, different understanding from another. Another person which has another understanding and other dimensions. Then we can have a integration of ideas. This is how we overcome existing problem when we face a block. Us. A a rock block that we cannot go through. So with this, I thank you and back to you Toastmaster of the evening.
Thank you, Sheng, for um give uh wonderful speech. Actually, I also want to. I hope I can also using this. Eastern to uh how to make uh more direction to find the some. Um proven or some. Um, and how to solve the problem. So uh may I invite the timer to sh- um share the timer report for us? Toastmaster, CN, neither one.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, General Elevator, Philomaster, I guess. My report is for the timer is as follow. Uh, Jacqueline Chang taken six minute ten second. Eric Raw taken taken seven minute twelve second. Shang Weiping. Taken twenty-two second. Sorry, twenty-two minute fifty-nine. Second. Is congratulation. All three speeches are eligible. Yes, thank you. Back to you, Thomas, after the evening.
Yeah, thank you, timer. So. Now is our one deciding the section for the Toastmaster in the meeting. The table topic the session. Well, the members and the guests who participate in give the informed to the speech. So the purpose of this project is demonstrate the members' ability to listen what others say. We conduct our Toastmaster, uh sorry, the table topic the section. May I invite our toast on the table topic the master? The welcome. The Toastmaster, Tosheng Pu. Over to you.
Thank you. Toastmaster, evening to me. I'm Shempu here and I have the honor of being your Toastmaster of the. To the today for tonight. And for those may not known, the the table topic is a fun and engaging way. To practice your informed to speech. Informed to speaking skill. And it's it's it also encourages us to think on our face and. And speak spontaneous for a topic for about one to two minutes. So now I will share my screen. So for this session participant who speak less than one minute. And more than two min, two min thirty second will be disqualified for the voting. So can I invite timer? To demonstrate the timing sequence. At one minute, green screen will be shown. At one minute thirty second, your screen will be displayed. At two minute, red screen will be displayed. At. At two minute and thirty second, we will be sure. So without further ado, I'll invite the speaker. Who want to be the first, want to be one dear, being the first speaker for table topic. Can I ask the multimedia to? Yeah.
Hi, I'm Lean. I wish to try.
Hiding. Great to hear that you are brave to be uh the first speaker. So which number would you like to try?
Seven.
Seven, alright. So the top, the the table topic, table topic is who supports you on your journey? Ding, the topic is who support you on your journey? The stage is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster, TTM Shempu. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Lean. Uh, good evening. My, who support me in my journey? I've been more than forty years in my own journey. Along the way, I for, I found many people in the many characters. Along the way, some is very good experience, some. I had bad experience. But. The most important things that what makes me today is the people. Who I met along the journey. And I found that who made me today, not only the people that. Give me some good experience. Some people who gave me hardness, give me challenge. Give me the pain also had made me today. Then I should thank to them for giving, give me to do, but to those hard, hard time. That make me more stronger. Of course, the people that most important to me that support me is my family. But I will not deny that also, the enemy also. Made me much, much stronger. They, they, they not only. I would say not support, but they are support me in a different way. Remember, no pressure, no diamonds. And once the diamond has been formed and it's forever permanent, thanks to also my enemy. That give me pillar supports, it's not support, it's the pillar. And at the, at the same times, families, friends also. Give me the best support in my life. Over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ling, for your sharing. Yes, I agree with you. Actually. We are actually shared by people around us, no matter they are kind or they are, they are. They are treating bad to us, but we still need to tense them because then we are here today. So now I would like to invite the next speaker. Who want to be the next volunteer?
I would like to volunteer.
Hi, it can.
Uh, which number has been taken?
Seven, just so.
Oh, can I take number eight?
The topic is what's the best advice you have received? What is the best advice you have received? The stage is your kind over to you.
Thank you. The best advice I have received, I don't think I can remember any advice that I have received, but there's one. Phrase that I've remember, I, I'm not too sure where is the source, but. There's something that I've always kept in mind and try my best to practice it on a day to, on, on a daily basis, which is. If it's less than two minutes, do it now. I repeat, if it is less than two minutes, do it now. So I'm not too sure where is the source of this phrase, because it's been so many years. But it's something that I've always remind myself, because, uh, as a normal human being, we tend to procrastinate. Like every normal human being do, from those small, small things to bigger things. And eventually they pile up and become bigger stuffs. So, uh, there are a lot of things that is easy to do. And because they are so easy to be done, so we take, we tend to delay it. For example. Uh, if after we have our dinner, some of us might delay washing the, doing the dishes. So of when we wake up, some of us might delay making the bed. So those are the things that can be done easily in. Say for instance, one minute, but we tend to delay it. So if it's two minutes. We do it now, I think we can clear off a lot of the platters in our life. And with that, we are able to focus and put more effort in things that makes more difference in our life. Rather than all these small, small clusters, small, small, uh, missions in our life that is. A little bit disturbing when it's not done, but it takes a li- a little bit more discipline or effort for us to do it. So, uh, in the end, I just want to share this with you. If it's less than two minutes, do it now. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Khan. Yes, I really both of them have this broadcast destination. And most important, we need to remember, if you want to do something, don't think so much. So just do it, do it as soon as possible. So without further ado, I write to us who want to be the next volunteer. Even though I'll call from the. See anyone to try?
Me, uh, uh, okay, I will choose number one. Hopefully it is easy.
Oh, yeah, Wasagi, sorry. Okay, so Wasagi, yes, was. So the top table topic is what does success mean to you? What does success mean to you? Over to you, Wasagi. Wasagi, sorry, Wasagi.
Okay, what the topic is what does success mean to you? Okay, in my opinion, getting out of my comfort zone is what we call success. Comfort zone is like a slow poison that kill our progress. One of the greatest step that I take to get out of my comfort zone is to enroll in the Toastmaster Club. So that I can become a confident and effective speaker. Previously, I was an introvert and I don't really communicate with anyone unless I am forced to do so. So. Um, I would like to get off my comfort zone, feel the fear, take up many challenges. And difficulties so that I can become a better person from day to day. Is it already one minute? Okay, that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Was- Wasagi, for your sharing. Yeah, success, everyone has their, has different way to, to define their success. For me, uh, it's not important, it's successfully not important, so we enjoy the, the process. So I think now we have, we have, we are a bit time be- behind the time. So can I invite Typer to, to, to share a timer report?
Good evening, Senator Elevator, Barrow Master and guest. My report is as for all, uh. Three of paper topic, uh, members who attend the. Report as for all is Lee. Taken two minute forty-second. She's the eligible. To, uh, to enter the. Best picking voting and. Kang Weimin taken two minute thirteen mi- thirteen second eligible to attend the votes. Wasaki taken less than one mi- one minute, so. She's not eligible to attend what best, uh, speaker voting too. Back to you, Thomas of the evening.
Sorry, Madame Wong. Uh, so only Kang is eligible, is it correct?
Yes, it is. Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Wong, for your ti- timing report. So, thank you, everyone who shared today. Your story and insight has truly enriched our, our meeting today, to, tonight. Then now let's us give a round applause to those who, who are brave and to stand up to give their speeches. And with that, I would like to hand it over, thank back to our Toastmaster evening. Thank you.
Thank you, the Toastmaster and the Table Topic, the Master Shempu. For engaging this, I sign in the section. So, um. Now the Zoom Master can share the, uh, the QR code for us. For, um, let us to avoid the, the best speaker, uh, the, the, uh, yes, the, the best speaker. So the link or source, put the shape also in the. So, uh. The voting, the closing is the one minute. Thank you. Okay, so maybe all the, uh, the members, um, scan already the QR code. So now, um, we take a good photo together. So may I invite the, our, the photographer?
Okay.
Okay, so everyone.
Um, one, two, smile. Then, that ready.
Maybe, one more, one, one more time.
Okay, one more. Okay, this my. Okay, done.
Okay, okay, thank you for the offer. So now, uh, is our break time. So the now time is eight forty-five, eighty-five. So our break time is the five minute, so. Later, uh, the meeting is on eight fifty-nine P M. We'll start the, the, the second session. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Now we are resting the time. Shempu, I want to ask you, why only three table topic?
Uh, three table topic?
Yeah.
Because the, because the time. Because we don't have enough time, right? Because the sessions until eight fifty.
Next time, please give at least five.
At least five.
Three already, don't give two, three only. Please five, Alice, everybody, all the members, at least five, don't three only.
Okay.
I'm on track your time, is it? We track your time? I, I. Okay, so okay, sometimes, of course, time is very important, but table topics three is not enough. Because we have members here, so we give all the members have a chance to speak. Especially those like, uh, timer, archer, they don't have, uh, they don't have. Chance to speak, then we give them the times, the, the chance to speak more. Hello, Lean. Hi, how are you? Where are you from?
Hi, hi, hi. Wow, I really enjoy this meeting. I'm from Balakong Selangor.
Oh, you're from Selangor?
Yeah, my club is Master Jaya.
Oh, Master Jaya. Oh, how, how you know our club?
Oh, I'm in the group of.
Division D?
Uh, no, no, it's a support, it's a online support.
Online support. Oh, okay, okay, yeah, in the group. So you, so you, you see our meeting then, you can, you want to join it?
Yeah, yeah, I saw the event this morning, so I, I have a time tonight, so I, I want to speak. Then, uh, actually, I just joined the Toastmasters, uh, around July this year. Yeah, because I think my communication skills are very poor, uh.
Yeah, I think you are good.
So since then, I, I tried to find any club that I can speak, uh, in, in my free time.
Oh, great, great, great. It's a very good spirit. Wow, we all have to learn from you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I thank you for invite me, uh, for allow me to join this meeting. Thank you so much.
We welcome, we welcome all the visiting Toastmasters and give us some feedbacks after that.
Of course, can, can.
Sure, 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 sure. So, so the, today is your first, first time. Are, are we, uh, our club is your first visit or, I mean, first visit club or you already joined others' club before?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I have, uh, joined many, many clubs previously since I joined the Toastmaster. But this is my first time joining, uh, Sutera. This is Sutera club, right? Yeah, this is the second club that I joined in the J B. The first is, uh, Juhu Jaya.
Oh, Jaya, Juhu Jaya.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I see, I see. Oh, God, I, I like your, I like your influence too just now, the table topic, very good.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
It's okay, next time you shut up a bit, then you can get married.
Okay, okay, thank you. This is the first time that my speech is exceeding my time, you know, previously only one minute, one minute, uh.
Actually, you are improving.
Okay, thank you so much.
Then you, have you taken your dinner already?
Me, yes, I can. Thank you so much. How about you?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I took my dinner just now. Very quick dinner. Alright, thank you. We get rest for a while, then I go to look for my others' members. Hang, ah, Wang Shong, just now you're professional. Can you, you have to teach us how to, how to. Need time to digest, even, even our Jaguar Burner also need to request a slide to go back and digest. Oh, this is so.
Mind blowing.
Yeah, suddenly so professional, you, oh, wow. Very good sharing, uh. So who else? Emma, Emma, how are you, Emma? This coming speaker tone, are you, this coming Saturday, you come for a speaker tone, right?
Ah, yes.
Yeah, okay, you have something with us, uh, that there you, uh, you, you told me already, and you are why you have to prepare for Emma? For her things. You see whether got anything for, for her or not, alright?
I want to gain back.
Yeah, 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 we will. You got one cut with me.
What is that, uh?
N F C cut.
Ah, okay, then.
The, the S call, you have to remind me, uh, you know.
Ah, okay.
One T B, one T B memory, so you have to remind me. Alright. Okay. So we until five, oh, it's going to start, right? So our ways, our S A. Okay, so before we our S A come back, then Junyi, very good, uh, today, you improve a lot. Uh, right, everybody also feel like that, right? Junyi improve a lot, a lot. Take more T M E next time. Well done, well done. Very good. Now you, you see E J also like that. Very good. The side Toastmaster is a learning place. The side Toastmaster is a learning place, everybody can learn. So where is our Russia, Wassa? Gee. We must say the last word, my thing first. All right, back to you.
You. Sorry, uh, welcome back everyone, hope you feel refreshed after the break. Now may I invite the Toastmaster of the evening to continue the meeting, thank you.
Hey, thank you, S A. So the feedback is the breakfast of the champion, the evaluation is the heart, the Toastmaster, the education, the program, the giving and the receiving, the constructive, the feedback is the important, so we can all the improve as the better the speaker. So, man, I would like to invite our general evaluator to lead the evaluation section, so please welcome our general evaluator, innovative, innovative to branding clever tree, Jacob Bernard. Over to you, thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Evening. To Junyi, fellow Toastmasters, good evening. For the general evaluation session, which I'll kick it off with the evaluation of speeches presented by our three speakers this evening. I would like the timer to demonstrate the time allowed for the evaluation, which is two to three minutes. At two minutes, the green screen will be displayed. At two minutes thirty seconds, the yellow screen will be displayed. At three minutes, the red screen will be displayed, and at three minutes fifteen seconds, the screen with the bell will be shown, and the speaker has fifteen seconds to wrap up his or her speech. With that, I would like to begin by introducing the first evaluator to evaluate our first speaker this evening, Toastmaster Jacqueline Cheng. Her level one project two speech, first speech with the title, childhood agony. We have our club president and the area G two director, who is a pharmaceutical sales rep. Let us put our hands to warmly welcome the committed Claire Tan, Leadership Development Level Five, let's welcome Claire Tan. Over to you, Claire.
Thank you, thank you, our general evaluator, Jacob Burnett, today. All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the pleasure of evaluating Jacqueline for her speech, childhood agony. And her project is evaluations and feedbacks first speech. School bullying has always been present, but we never pay attentions until it's happened around us. Thank you, Jacqueline, for the sharing for experience with us. It's remind us once again how childifying school bullying can be, and how it can be last fears into the adulthood. In this speech, Jacqueline skillfully use the P P T to guide us through her story. I was catched by her stories and follow her to the end. Jacqueline, you can be a very good storyteller, because I following all through your story. And you choose this topic, it helps everyone to think back, we have care more about these school bullings. There's a some area to improve to your story to more compelling. It's make more eye contact with the audience. Your eyes often look outwards, uh, has you were like recalling some things in your story. Look at the camera will be more, will helps us, like you connect to us with us better. Additionally, your story is insightful, but it would be better with more body language. For example, when the man demand, de- demand the money with you, from you, you could show us a fearful experience and less a ghost with you. Like you are very scared and look at him, then he like very scary, and give me the money, give me five ringgit, like this. Then so that we can ghost with you together. And lastly, when you mention about the prevent is the best medicine, and this words is very powerful. You also can, you could tell us, only prevents can protect our childrens. You can use the stressed voice to tell all the audience to tell us that prevents is the best medicine. Please, preventing and can help to protect our children. So please pay more attentions and take actions now. So this one will let us, let the audience feel that this is more important. And in my conclusions, Jacqueline, your speech on childhood agony was well structured and engaging. Your P P T is adding point for your story. And with some body language and eye contacts, your story were more compelling. And I look forward your second speech, and well done, Jacqueline, thank you, and back to you, G.
Thank you, Toastmaster Claire Tan for that feedback. I'm sure Toastmaster Jacqueline will be able to harmonize the points that your evaluator tonight has given to you with your future preparation, and to be able to find your voice to deliver a more effective speech the next time. Next, to evaluate our second speaker, we have our second speaker, Eric Lau, Development One. We have a graphic designer. I realize while preparing this introduction, that the graphic design relates to both print and digital. U I design refers exclusively to the design of digital user interfaces such as websites and apps. So something new for me. And our evaluator serves in the Vice President of Education Subcommittee. He's planting a seed of success by joining Toastmasters to increase his self-confidence and to speak fluently before an audience of strangers as well as in public. Let us put our hands warmly welcome Toastmaster We Ping Hao. Toastmaster We Ping Hao, are you ready?
Uh, not really, okay, joking, yeah.
Over to you, audible and visible.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, General Evidator, Bernard, fellow Toastmaster. Um, welcome guest and especially, uh, Toastmaster Eric. Uh, first of all, I would, uh, like to give a thumbs up to Toastmaster Eric for his experience, inspiring speech on the difference, the difference a mentor made in my life, uh. Eric now is also my mentor in Toastmaster, he teach me a lot, so. Um, in this, uh, regarding him, his speech, in this brief but very detailed speech, uh, Eric provide us with valuable insights into the importance of mentor, so, uh, he follow with the struc- structured progression of ideas, his speech structure help the audience follow the speech logic and take away the main message effortlessly. He pretty much harmonize all the point he tries to convey, so for example, in the beginning, he said, he tried to explain the definition of mentor with a Greek story, he talks about the Odysseus son. And then he also, he also say, uh, he also described it, uh, described mentor, the the idea, uh, with some sentence, for example, they don't just walk, uh, walk the way, they also, uh, help us guide along. And besides that, he, uh, Eric also share his personal story to help others relate better. So he talks about, uh, how John is a good mentor, guiding, guiding him all the way. And beside that, uh, Eric is also uh, very good at explaining certain incident and situation with analogy, so for example, he use uh, maybe called the word compass as a guidance, and at the end, Eric also very good at, um, giving people question to ponder and to reflect on the topic. Uh, overall, Eric also maintain a good pacing, there's no rush and also no panic. He also have a lot of, uh, good posture and also, uh, good body language. If, if I want to, if I were to offer construction, constructive feedback, I would suggest perhaps Eric can have more tone dynamics, uh, intonation, increase, maybe you can increase volume on certain punchline or key points, uh, might be more impactful and also captivating to the audience. So in conclusion, the speech was very insightful and engaging. I encourage Eric to use this feedback to become an even better communicator, thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ping Hao for that evaluation. I believe Eric will be able to find his voice and deliver a greater speech in his next project. To evaluate our third speaker, President, uh, Xiang Huaping, Presentation Mastery Level Four, who delivered a project, level five project, which is to prepare to speak professionally with the title Perspectives. We have an excellent teacher at a secondary school for students with learning disabilities. She's planting the seeds of success through meeting and exploring challenges. Let us warmly welcome the heartwarming Toastmaster, Hemarani Munisami. Hemarani Munisami, over to you.
Thank you, G, and thank you, everyone, I'm going to evaluate for Xiang Huaping. Okay, first of all, I would like to start that general Excel at, okay. Uh, Xiang Huai start by asking questions, really connected with the audience, what type of a sharing she going to do? And everybody eagerly, uh, want to answer, and she also encourage a members to type in the chat box, so there will be an interaction among, uh, members. Okay, number two is she's really good in a selection of pictures to keep the idea of her topics. The third one is good explanation by showing an elephant pictures, not everyone perspective the same, but we must have the, our own perception to evaluate. Okay, and then she recap about dimensions, it's really very good. And she also have a good attempt to try different, uh, topic. And love, uh, and I really love the ending by giving an example and advice to see in a different dimension, it's really, she's really excel. But the improvement part, uh, when it comes to the movie, she shows that it's like, really, I feel that she doing the review for the movie, because I'm really interested with the movie review, and I feel that, why is it she's doing movie review? So I think she can do the improvement for that. Secondly, is too many questions focus on what? And repeating she asked a what, maybe in future, she can add, I may try to use W H questions, so it can be a trigger other members to create creatively, so we can come up with different answers. Apart from that, uh, she can may try to relate own or personal experience to uh, come up with the title, because it's very, for my side, it's really hard to relate the topic of a dimension one to nine, but it's really good, but if, maybe she can come up with the, uh, layman terms, that everybody can understand and can feel it. A challenge that she can make it, uh, make it more lemon term, and can include humor element that I can't see uh, anywhere, because everyone looking very seriously. And she can improve in the tone, intonations to engage with the audience, uh, that for eighteen to twenty-two minutes. So overall, I really enjoy, but for me, it's like to entering the physics classes. So anyhow, in future, I really want to get the lemon term, uh, sharing, thank you, that's all for me, over to you, Jean.
Thank you, Toastmaster Hemarani for your evaluation. Next, to evaluate our fourth speaker, we have actually a speaker who is doing an evaluation, which is the evaluator's speech for Leadership Development Level Five Claire Tan's speech, Level One Project. The evaluator is a procurement manager in a supply chain industry. He's planting his seeds of success by honing his skills in prepared speech, evaluation and feedback, and impromptu speaking. Let us recognize the optimistic Toastmaster, Ong Ying Ju, level engaging humor level four, over to you, Toastmaster Ong Ying Ju.
Hi, uh, good evening to all, and they're very good evaluations, uh, speech from Claire. I think your speech is very good, because we have a very nice structure on the evaluations whereby you will be starting be a very soft, it is opening to recap some, uh, title, uh, on the speech that help people to remember back on the factor of the speakers, and you continue with a, for some good point. After that, you have something to be proved, and the last one, you're gonna call for actions and give some challenge to the speakers to be come back another better speech. So this is kind of the recap society, you make your speech is very concrete and very comprehensive to the speakers. But there will be one thing I would like most about the voice, uh, your pace is very stable, which is I try to use it now, it's very stable, and make people feel that they are really easy to listen. And then you'll be show a really simple example on actions on the field that be demonstrated to speaker, to how to demonstrate a few things, and then to be shown to them to be learned on that. But there will be something that we will talk about eye contact. So it will be not really see some demonstration eye contact with the speaker, the speaker could be need to learn of how the light, I connect, gonna go to, gonna go to the right, left. So this is kind of the eyes, they can play around, and then we are gonna be focused about, uh, how maybe the speakers can, 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 can make use of the uh, presentation aid, and then to be put some point to the speaker, how to create to it. So what I will be suggesting for you, and we are going to recap, uh, some very few point on the speaker, because you can put up some numbering, for example, uh, there will be first, second, third, and after they will make a speaker to be following your statements, and after that, we are talking about some work already, yes, to be proved, and they can demonstrate more, example, there will be some situation that there will be a bully and heavy work to persons, then we can have some problem, suggestions, and then you can demonstrate to the speaker how to do a rope and a screen, right? So they will be having some more interactions on this, on the topic. And after that, uh, I will going to suggest that, uh, what you will be doing better in this, just want include a bit more on, we talk about the suggestion of the high contact, those are demonstrations, do some action for the body English, those demonstrations, and we are going to have some, uh, more to do how to let the speakers know, others in a comment, but you give some example for them, and then to have some, uh, way to see it, to learn from that. And then be that your structure of the speech is ready, fully covered, and maintain a pace, and then just want any more actions and demonstration to the speakers, and by to recap your evaluation, they will be great, so looking forward for our next evaluations. And, uh, do let me know, you are contacting on the evaluation contest, so make sure that I will open participate, okay? Thank you for that, bye bye.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ong for your evaluation report. Next, I'd like to invite our timer to give a report, Toastmaster C N one, to kindly give us the report on the time taken by our evaluators.
Good afternoon, all members. Congratulation to all the evaluator. And O I, Elizabeth, Creatan, take country minute nineteen second. Ong Ping Hao taken Om Ben Hao taken three minute four second. He Hemerani taken two minute forty-two second. On Angel, taken three minute six second. Congratulation, all the evaluator are eligible. Go for voting. Thank you. Back to you, G.
Thank you, Toastmaster CN One for your report. Now, I would like to invite our Zoom Master, Master Media, to put up the. Vote for the best evaluator. Do we do it now? Hello, Toastmasters. Please take the time to vote for the best evaluator. Using this QR code by scanning a QR code. Do we have a link? Not necessary. You can click on the link in the chat. Have you all done that? If you have done that, I would like to now move on to inviting. The next role player, our grammarian, to give his report. I'm too sorry, isn't it? Our grammarian. Will evaluate on the good and poor usage of the language. In tonight's meeting. And this evening, we have an engineer by profession and also our club secretary. Toastmaster Max Mahendran. He is planting the seed to be an effective communicator. To achieve success in every area of his life. Let us now welcome our grammarian, Toastmaster Max. Toastmaster Max, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Over to you, you are audible and visible.
Great, great. Thank you, Chikbanak. Um fellow Toastmasters and guests, my report is as follows. So there are a lot of um excellent use of English, so let me start with that first. So from Claire. It's all, it it all starts with a vision. Plant the seed in your mind. Feeding your seed of success. A seed doesn't become a tree overnight. Trust the process. Plant, nurture, and harvest. From Chunyi, let's celebrate our growth and success together. From Jacky, I was over the moon. The agony is clear in my mind. What has been done cannot be undone. From Eric, navigate the challenges and growth. It provides tools and the mindset needed. It lasts for a lifetime. From Shengpu, from Huaping, break through this blind spot. From Shengpu, success is not important as long as we enjoy the process. From Ling, no pressure, no diamonds. From Basu, comfort zone is a slow poison. From Tang, captivating the audience. And. Some improper grammatical use and suggestion for improvement, you can accomplish accomplish these years. Could be you can accomplish this year. Tonight, the program to be tonight's program. Speaker is the translator, should be speaker is a translator. Nobody is true and nobody is wrong, should be nobody is right and nobody is wrong. This concept is described about time should be this con- concept describes time. Many, many possibilities should be, there are so many possibilities. School bullying is always present, it be school bullying bullying is always present. And. Prevention is best medicine, should be prevention is best medicine, medicine. And uh there are some mispronunciation, so common ones uh repeated, thi- this word was uh. Commonly repeated, uh the word success is always pronounced as success, so should be success. Then you have the word session, which is always wrongly pronounced as season, so it should be session. And then there was a word, uh the word is introvert, but it was pronounced as intro wet, so it should be introvert. And the usage of word and idiom of the day, but not. I combine both harmonize and find your voice, I combine both, but not used for four times, Tang used one time. Uh Jacky used it one time and Eric Lo used it too many times. Like almost sixteen, if I counted it right. So that's all for my report today. Thank you all who use the word and idiom of the day. Um I think should be. Uh both of them were quite quite easy to use in, you know, daily uh or. Uh uh daily usage, right? So thank you very much and back to you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Max Mahendran for that meticulous and marvelous report you have delivered. You are a great listener. I hope you will post that report in our chat group soon. Next. We will call upon our time filler counter. Our R counter is the Sajad Arms of Sutra Thamato's Masters Club. She's a customer service executive with a logistics company. She's planting a seed of. Action for success. Let us warmly welcome. Liang Ying Yi, Presentation Mastery Level Five. Toastmaster Liang Ying Yi, are you ready? To deliver your report, wonderful, you can see that on the on the screen. Over to you, Ying Yi.
Thank you, G E Bernard. Um before that, I want to ask is my voice clearly, you can hear my voice play?
Yes.
I will, I was a brother because because I don't know why I come Spotify today is something wrong. So my Zoom meetings keep lagging and lagging, so this is my best level to record down all our account of the report. So, uh if you know, my name is Ying Yi. So I think everyone know why it's our culture, right? So one practice is to send decent and maximum penalty is for five ringgit. So let's start first our FAA. Was I give, there's no killer or any purchase. So congratulation, next is precedent, Claire. Two so, repeated words, demand, demand, doctor is three. So. Sixty cent. Next is our T M E Toastmaster, your Chunyi spoke uh. It um twenty-two uh one so repeated words is whether to be the the may I. Others is uh some. Something I heard keep repeating for okay, so I record that is total thirty-six. Uh maximum five ringgit. Next is our first speaker, Toastmaster Jacking spoke two uh. So total forty cents. Next is because Eric's. There is no no catches, congratulation. Our third speaker, Xiang Huai, Toastmaster Xiang Huaping, two um one uh two so. Repeated this this diagram, one or. Total seven catches, why in guess for this. Next is our paper topic master, Toastmaster Thosshampus. Repeated what is there are there are, so total one purchase, twenty cent. Next is our visiting Toastmaster Ling, there is no catches, congratulation. Our next speaker, Toastmaster Can We Mean, one um two uh for the trick catches sixty cent. Uh next is our journey evaluator, Toastmaster Bernard. So far, there is no catches from him, congratulations. Our first ever, our next evaluator on Toastmaster Feng Hao, three um nine uh of the half. Purchase touring in forty-second, forty cent. Next is Toastmaster Hemer. One um five uh thirty-six, one ringgit and twenty. Twenty cent. Next is Toastmaster E J. Two um five uh repeated words, use use, doctor is purchase. Next is timer, Toastmaster CN, one and our grammarian, next my hundred, there is no catch up. I heard from these two Toastmaster. So our granddaughter is the D ringgit for the. Later on, I will share the report in our group, please uh touch and go to me. If that's okay, and by today, it's very good. That's all from me. Back to the night, you better not.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ying Yi. I picked up eight time fillers from you. Beginning your word with so, for example, you said so congratulations. It just has to say congratulations, we'll do, we do the add the so in the beginning. There's five so's and three uh's, total eight. I shall now present my. Sorry, the climate's report first for the entire meeting. Toastmaster CN One, are you ready to present the climate's report for the meeting?
Yes. Uh good evening, Senator Rerita, Pharaoh Thomas. My Toma, uh my report as for all. S A A. Wasagi have taken four minute. Opening address by Creatan. Taken five minute. T M E Chunyi. Taken six minute. Grand uh primary report by Max. Taken three minute thirty-eight second. Art how the. Liang Ying Yi taken three minute nine second. Back to you, G.
Thank you, Toastmaster CN One. Now we are at nine minutes, enough, we are at nine thirty-four P M. How are we doing for time according to the schedule? It says here nine thirty-four, January, this report, wonderful, we are all on time. A big round of applause for everyone, to everyone. I'd like to begin with my report. The meeting started at seven thirty P M on on time. Our such an arm stores master, but wasagi, hold the meeting to order. She announced the ground rules and introduced the president. With some information of the president. Well done. The opening address by President Claretan. She delivered an inspirational message that was very encouraging for all members. She even elaborated on why it is important to plant the seeds, to nurture them. With patience and persistence and also to trust the process. She also led by using a good introduction format of the next speaker. I encourage all. Role players, especially Toastmaster Evening and whoever takes the role as a speaker when introducing the next speaker. To use the introducing the speaker format. The Toastmaster Evening, Toastmaster. Your Chunyi. Leadership Development One, Level One. He has introduced the meeting team very well. He also introduced the role players with personal information that we can get to know the role player better. And he also mentioned their duties. Well done, Toastmaster Evening. For the prepared speeches, we have, we have four speakers, actually one is doing an evaluator's speech. So we have heard speakers speaking on subjects like childhood agony. On the monitoring program. As well as on perspectives, which certainly was very boggling for me, but I hope others were able to follow. And we also heard the evaluator's speech. What I would like to comment about the evaluators. Who have. Evaluated our speakers is that they have used the format of the opening remark. Beginning with opening remark, covering the area for improvement, as well as suggestions for improvement. A summary of their suggestions as well as a closing remark. And this was done by all our evaluators, well done. On the subject of table, on the table topic session, I felt that two speakers were too few. As we could have increased it to at least five speakers for this session. To enable more members who are not filling any roles to be able to have a speaking. Opportunity in our club meeting. Please look into that because we only spent eleven minutes for table topics. When it was scheduled for twenty minutes. There were some hiccups along the way, therefore, time was. Used up during the session. Our grammarian has done a wonderful job. He. Was in full attention, picked up the good usage of the language and he has also helped us to improve our poor usage of the language. Our counter, Young Ying Yi, you have done a wonderful job, having enriched the club by thirteen ringgit, forty cents plus. Another one ringgit, sixty cents, that should bring the figure up to fifteen ringgit, am I right? Ying Yi, is it fifteen we get? Thank you. Our photographer, Toastmaster for Wasagi also took photos, the group photo. Zoom Master, who's our Zoom Master this evening actually? Because awaiting, I should see him there, yeah, that's right. He didn't show his face, he's probably busy at work. Thank you for all our, to all our role players for your contribution in making this meeting a successful meeting. I return control of this meeting to our Toastmaster Evening. Toastmaster Chunni, over to you.
Thank you, Jerry, whether. Jake Cooper for the evaluator section, why but so. Now is our. Voting section and the water section, so may I the invite the Zoom Master to spend the. The screen for us. So the first and the best to be prepared the spin speaker go to. Bravo, please. Is is our. The best we are is every role. Congratulations. So may I invite the photographer? And you need to pin. Our presidents. The speaker and then. Any. Maybe I can also can.
Wait, I can can wait for a while.
Okay, I've been already.
Oh, you click really?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take a photo now. Please smile. One, two, three. Okay, I'll take another one. Wait up. One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So next is our. Best table topic to speaker. Run row please. Who is. Our best table of big is coming me. So.
Can someone help me to spotlight come?
Yes. Okay I'm ready.
Oh yeah. It are ah. One two three okay I take another one one two three smile okay that's all thank you.
Yeah thank you. So next one is the best the waiter. Run row. Who is our best evaluator is.
Yay.
Toastmaster Himalaya. Congratulations. And. May I invite the Himalaya to open the the video. Are you there Himalaya?
If she's not over there just take a picture from here for her okay ready.
Okay.
Let me I just take the picture of both of you is it?
You can spotlight his uh where is it spotlight hit huh?
Hmm there is no spotlight option for him I don't know. Oh wait a oh. I spotlight okay.
Okay okay.
Okay please smile. Okay one two three I will take another one one two three okay thank you.
Yeah congratulations Himalaya. So next uh is our upcoming events the section so. The first that is this then is. This this week. The speak up on one point zero so may I invite our. Event the chair to. Announce the. Um this event over to you Wei Jing.
Hello. Just feel there to have the speaker though so for those speaker uh you can well prepare for your speech and. And that's all ah and reply my messages. Okay thank you.
Okay okay thank you the Wei Jing so maybe um Wei Jing you need to uh move forward to the 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 script. Okay the next one is the. The Toastmaster International the district one point zero. And one zero two the half of it. So the event is. And the venue is. Ho Qua the restaurant and the Yongping so and. The date is thirty. On October. Next on Saturday. So who um members can enjoy the the half on this event also. So next one. Is our next meeting. The Halloween the celebration. So the venue is in um is our office the Toastmaster and the Sutra Ottoman the office. So this is the product the section so everyone can bring one thesis. To share as we can come together to celebrate. Also we also can um who can make the dress or make the Halloween dress also can. And come to celebrate in in the next meeting. So the next one is. The human humorous speech and table topic. The context this is the area of the section. The venue is the boarding for this Russia. The golf and the country the resort. And the date is the twenty sixth October so. And I invite all and the members to support our. Members. Who is um come this under context that it come to support our. The if done E Z O and then the the last one is the Wei Jing. So the next one is. The English the without border. Uh this is the aggressive for the Sutra Dama the Toastmaster the members so. Uh we can learn together. Uh learn the English together in this the event. So the. Uh the venue is uh also is the office and then the way uh the day is the thirty October. So the last the event. Is upbeat the workshop two point zero. So uh now I would like to invite our uh. The event the chair Jacking over to you.
Hi everybody. Good evening alright okay this uh if uh this event actually is the second time that we uh organizing first time uh every was the chair. If I'm not mistaken so this is the second time we found that actually quite a lot uh members are interested. That's why we have this second time then at the moment I've received around seven members joining but I would like to have more than that. Uh my target is twenty so uh those who haven't joined as you know that evaluation actually. Requires techniques and skills for me um because actually I've joined Toastmasters for a few months I find that this. Car actually is something that we need to explore more. Uh for those uh who haven't joined or haven't really tried uh very hard on this actually this workshop will be beneficial for you. Uh you'll become a much better uh evaluator after this workshop welcome to join thank you.
Hey thank you the Toastmaster the Jacking shape so. Now I would like to invite our club presidents. Here done for the causing the address. Over to you thank you.
Thank you Toastmaster Chun Yi thank you so much. As we near the end our meeting tonight I would like to thanks all of you to come to our meeting. First of all anyone who want to join the whole friend. All friend we still have three tickets on hands if let's say. You want to join you can contact me or contact Y Y so you can we can give you special price. Early bird's prize alright then second please supports Wei Jing. This the speakathon the speakathon is the first time to do the speakathon so I hope that all of you can support him. And do her do his role play yes now we still shot some role players. Alright then the things that I also have some exciting news to tell all of you to share. Our very own Max has welcome his. Baby prince into the world so today he got his prince so don't forget to send him a congratulations. Message uh but not today lah maybe tomorrow now I think he's busy to taking care his baby. So you all can contact him after today. Then in there's even more celebrating our club renovations is come to ninety nine percent renovation is complete. So for those who are attending our upcoming speakathon you will able to enjoy the newly upgrade space. So lastly and give all around a pros to our winners or our humor humorous speech and table topic contest. Our first winner is humorous speech contest E J Ong. Let's give a round of applause and then second place is Wong Wei Jing well done Wei Jing. And third place is Adeline Adeline is not here today. So then next will be table topic contest our first place is if done if done is not here right now. And second place congratulations again E J. And the place is Wong Wei Jing wow this time Wei Jing is taking two place two trophy bags huh? But well done well done and all the first place and second place winner will all proudly to represent Sutra Utama. So the area contest on twenty sixth of October at the Ponderosa. So let's all of us and blessing them and get the trophy back from Ponderosa okay? Thank you so before I end the meeting can I get some feedback from our guest today Lin? How do you feel our club meetings tonight?
Oh thank you so much um uh Miss President oh it's very great and I feel like I'm I feel like. I'm at home I didn't feel like I'm a guest. You you see the this is the first step I I think I I go to the cloud with. Very active supportive um in the chat room wow I really enjoy this and. Yeah a lot a lot of thing I learned from you guys thank you so much yeah a lot of personal stories that give me. Uh motivations and a lot of thing I I learned yeah about bullies about the mentorings about uh yeah. About that that perspective that that forty seventy huh this is very interesting. I thank you so much and the the table topic questions and is a very. Help help me to easily to think and speak thank you so much over to you.
Thank you Lin thank you for your feedbacks and hopes you come against next meeting. Our our next meeting will be third weeks of October there's a hybrid meetings if you're free you can join us again. Okay thank you Lin thank you so much so now I shall adjourn our one zero eight. Regular meeting thank you everyone's and thank you all of you join us tonight and we are wow tonight nine five four. We are earlier the schedule our schedule is ten o'clock and we earlier five minutes so anyone want to speak right now another five minutes? Why I want I say speak everybody laugh like this alright. Thank you so much and thank you Jacob Bernard and thank you all of you tonight thank you Lin and come again. Thank you okay bye bye tonight thank you everyone thank you C N. Bye bye.